Welcome to the third episode in the first season of Justice Center Weekly, the videocast from the Justice Center for Constitutional Freedoms. This week I have with me lawyer James Manson, who is taking the lead on the Linda Stone case. Linda Stone is a trustee with the Durham District School Board in Ontario, who has been prevented from fulfilling her duties because other members of the board disagree with her opinions. That's my take on it, but I better turn this over to James, who can straighten me out lest I stray from the substance. James, maybe lay it out for us, please.
Thanks, Kevin. I think you've got it pretty straight, to be honest. This is a case where you have an elected representative, school board trustee, who, by the way, I understand was elected with the most votes of any of the candidates in the Ottawa, in the Durham District School Board elections. So she's a popular candidate. She's a popular trustee, my understanding. And anyway, she was bringing some concerns to the board's attention. Now, one of the issues in this case will be, you know, what is the duty of a trustee? What is a trustee supposed to do when they go to a school board meeting? And of course, our contention will be that then one of those duties is naturally to raise concerns and to raise questions and to bring those questions in a respectful and sincere and thoughtful and constructive way to the board. That is the whole point of having a representative democracy. So in this particular case, Linda did do just that. There were some concerns about some various policies that we can talk about, Kevin. But basically, she was, I think, it's not unfair to say that she was canceled. They tried to cancel her with respect to what she said, what her questions were. And that is really the basis of this lawsuit. Was the board right in taking the steps that it did to punish her for bringing forward these concerns, these questions? That's it in a nutshell. So I think you're quite right in how you describe the case.
Right. It's woke culture, though. I think that's one of the things that sort of makes it of interest to a lot of people. Because this has been going on continent wide. I mean, we don't have to get into all those specific things that she said. You can read that in our postings online. I think you go through them in the filing that you made. But you can just quickly tell us, you know, maybe as you describe some of the remedies that you saw, you'll be able to tell us what was said, that kind of thing.
Right. So just a quick word on the woke culture angle that you alluded to just now, Kevin. I understand that there's many, many viewers out there who have a real serious problem with the woke culture, with the woke ideology. I don't see this case as necessarily centering around the woke ideology. Definitely, it's part of it, right? I mean, I can talk to you about what trustee Stone said and how she tweeted and what all that. But really, I think what is more important than a political ideology or a political question with respect to how should we, you know, handle various issues in school? Naturally, I'm thinking of the transgender issue, which is apparently a big deal right now in school boards, particularly with respect to washrooms and things like that, and whether or not it's okay to keep this stuff from parents, right? Whether someone's child is identifying as a different gender and whether that's appropriate to hide from the parents. All of those are important issues. But those are maybe more political issues. And when a lawyer like me gets involved, we certainly need to be able to parse out the political stuff from the legal stuff and the constitutional stuff. And so when I conceive of this case, Kevin, my thoughts immediately go to the Charter of Rights and the Constitution. The woke agenda that some people say is taking over the school boards and all of that, that's a valid fight and a valid question. That may be a better question to be had at the ballot box as opposed to in court. Now, I think where this gets tricky, right, is when you have this intersection between all of that, the political questions about what do we do with transgender students? What do we do with school facilities and programs to deal with all those things? And freedom of expression. There's the intersection between the policy and somebody's constitutional rights to express themselves. You know, the Supreme Court of Canada, Kevin, has said that the free exchange of ideas, right, is the lifeblood of a democracy. Well, that I agree with, right? And I don't think anybody could seriously disagree with that in a country like ours. So to me, this case where you've got a school board that is essentially, at least in my opinion anyway, punishing an elected representative for doing her job, that to me is really what this case is about. We cannot accept as a democratic society, we cannot accept where the very body that a person is a part of, here in this case, a school board, has the ability to silence the representatives on the board. It would be like in Parliament telling the minority party, let's say that all of a sudden the Speaker of the House tells the minority NDP caucus that they can't talk anymore, that they don't have the right to say anything. Because, you know, the Liberal Party or the Conservative Party, whoever party's in power, doesn't agree with what they have to say, doesn't think that that's right. Well, that's not right. I mean, that is obviously not right. So that is how I conceive the case, Kevin. I don't conceive the case so much as a woke case, although definitely wokeism and woke ideology is balled up in it, definitely. But I have much more concern about the freedom of expression angle. And by extension, the rule of law, right, Kevin? I mean, we bandy that term around a law, the rule of law. And I just want to make sure that everybody knows what that means, right? What that means is that we are a country governed by laws and that everybody is subject to those laws, from the prime minister and on down to the school board trustees, right? Which includes, of course, the board itself in this case. And the rule of law includes principles like elected representatives have the right to say what they need to say. And so in my view, when you start to mess around with these very fundamental concepts, these very, very delicate and fragile, but yet critically important concepts that we have frankly been relying on for the last 200 years, you know, to make our country go, to make our country be the country that it is. When these concepts start to get eroded, then that's very dangerous. And we could end up in a place that is very, very much less free and less democratic than we thought overnight.
Right. Now, I understand by the filing that you're looking for a judicial review.
Right.
And maybe you could just quickly tell us about that particular process and what kind of remedies you're going to seek going this route.
That's right. So Kevin, a judicial review is kind of like an appeal. It's not quite an appeal, but the distinctions between an appeal and a judicial review are fairly dry and esoteric in some ways. And so it's basically like an appeal. What we're going to be doing is asking the Superior Court here in Ontario. Now, I don't want to get too caught up in the details, but there's also another type of court here called the Divisional Court. Doesn't really matter for the viewers. We're going to be asking the court in this case to basically take a look, take a good look at the board's decision in this case to, you know, punish trustee Stone and to basically set that order aside. So what happened, of course, with trustee Stone, just to sort of recap, she had a few instances where she was commenting on some draft policies that were under consideration by the school board. And a lot of them were centering around the human rights policy. The human rights policy in the Durham Region School Board is quite long and quite involved. And there's also a lot of kind of satellite documents that go with it. So anyway, one of the documents was referring to the concept of white supremacy. Now, I don't want to get involved with that right now with respect to all of the meanings that that can conjure up to people on both sides of that debate. However, the point is that Linda and some people that Linda was hearing from had a problem with that. They had a problem with the inclusion or the insertion of the words "white supremacy" into this document. And Linda's comment was, you know, can we take this out? Does this have to be in here? Some people that I've spoken to think that it's inflammatory, divisive, and it has the effect of separating, you know, white people from all other people. And that's not helpful in her view. And she wondered if there was a way of maybe changing the language or somehow dealing with this. There were other similar comments. And there were other similar tweets that she put out, you know, with respect, again, generally talking about the gender issue, the woke issues. For example, I think one of the tweets that she put out was something to do with the use of pronouns and what is an acceptable range of pronouns for a teacher to have to memorize if in fact every student in the class goes by a different pronoun and you get a different, and if you get something wrong, is that offensive to the student? And will that lead to disciplinary action on behalf of the teacher? And, you know, comments like this, that really, I know they are fairly detail oriented, these questions, but in fact, they are an extension of what these types of policies lead to. So ultimately, for types of comments like this, the board, so basically what happens is, Kevin, the board follows a procedure to investigate. So what happened was there were a couple of trustees who filed a complaint back against Linda, other trustees who believed that Linda's comments and her questions were deeply offensive. And they were, you know, contrary to the mandate of the board to establish safe spaces for people of all gender expressions, gender identities, and all such. So what happens is there is a person called the Integrity Commissioner, okay? I don't think that that has to be used in each case. I think that the school boards are able to choose whether they want to employ one or not. Don't quote me on that, but I think that's the case. In any event, there is one here in the Durham Region School Board. They do have an integrity commissioner, which is a person, usually a senior lawyer. Usually, maybe there's a law firm that's on retainer to take these types of cases on. And they kind of act as independent investigators or special rapporteurs as the current federal politicians are talking about these days. They don't call them that, but that's kind of the thing. They have independent authority. They go and they make inquiries and they issue a report about whether or not, in this case, trustee Stone in fact, did violate the code of conduct of a school board trustee. So anyway, the integrity commissioner is usually voted in or approved by the very board, who in this case was the one who had the issue with trustee Stone. So that raises natural issues with respect to impartiality, which I'll be probably getting into as well when this case proceeds. But in any event, the integrity commissioner is supposed to be impartial and is supposed to investigate the case fairly and independently. And so anyway, they issue a report. In this case, the report did in fact conclude that Linda Stone, trustee Stone, did violate the code of conduct. I don't think it was particularly clear on which actual provisions were in fact violated. That's another issue that we'll have to be dealing with. But in any event, the school board adopted the report from the commissioner and then decided on the punishment. Now, the punishment in the Education Act here in Ontario allows the board to do three things, one, two, or three of three things. One, they can censor, formally censor trustee Stone. They did. Two, they can exclude her from the next upcoming board meeting, which they did. And three, they can take a decision to exclude her from all of the committee meetings and the subcommittee meetings that are part of the board's mandate. So you can imagine, Kevin, that there's lots of committees in these boards. There's the Finance Committee. There's going to be a Governing Committee, a Human Rights Committee, all kinds of committees with respect to the actual day-to-day functioning of the board in the school district. There's a lot of stuff that has to be done. So anyway, as part of the punishment, the board had the authority to and did exclude her from all committee meetings for the rest of the year, until the end of this year. Now, that's, I think Linda said a couple of phone calls ago, that's like 50, like up to 50 board meetings and committee meetings that she's been excluded from. Now, let's just stop right there. The committee meetings is where all the governing happens, okay? What happens at the board level is the board will basically like make a formal vote to formalize a final draft of a policy or something. But the policies get hammered out in the committee sessions. The budget negotiations take place in the committees. And all the documents that people rely on, reports from this person, that person, who knows what, they all get considered at the committee level, of course, just like in Parliament, just like in the legislatures. And so to exclude somebody from those meetings also means that they don't have the right to those documents. So Linda Stone cannot get access to the documents that she needs to do her job. Because she can't just show up at a school board meeting when all the hammering out is over and vote yes or no on a policy that she doesn't know what went into that policy. She'd be shooting in the dark. And you can't ask an elected representative, at least in my book, you can't ask somebody to show up and vote yes or no on a policy when you don't know the details of the policy or why it says this and it doesn't say that. That's called dereliction of duty. That's abdicating your responsibility as an elected member of the community. So the board did all those three things, though. So again, back to your original question, Kevin, our application is seeking for this decision to be set aside. We're seeking to have Linda reinstated, to have her full panoply of privileges reinstated so that she can go to the committee meetings and that she can, you know, have access to all the documents and that she can, you know, and also we're asking the court to cancel the censure, the formal censure. Because I know that like a formal censure doesn't really have any other effect other than to be like a formal rebuke of what Linda said, but you know, that's not right. And Linda was asking questions about policies with a sincere desire to move the debate, to bring a different point of view to the debate. And that's what democracy ought to be about. And so we're asking the court to set that aside as well. And then we're asking the court also to declare that what happened was unconstitutional. So we're asking the court to say that Linda's rights under Section 2B of the Charter of Rights were contravened, were violated. And that's what we're doing.
Okay. Was that related to the Education Act, though, when you were talking about the violation of her rights? So that you're actually looking at the Education Act in Ontario and saying, because they use the Education Act, those three things that you said they used to censor her, they came from the Act. They allowed her to be punished under that. So to overturn that, is that basically challenging the legislation itself?
We are, to my, I don't want to get into strategies and tactics necessarily, Kevin, but this application itself does not seek to overturn any law. That would be a different argument, which I don't think we're doing in this particular case. Not to say that maybe we ought not to consider doing that in some appropriate case. But in this particular case, what we're suggesting is that the decision itself was unreasonable. So really, when you're into a judicial review situation, your burden, my obligation, is to demonstrate that the decision under scrutiny here, which is the board's decision to censor her and all that, was unreasonable. That is the catchphrase, the catchword in judicial review applications. This is an area of law called administrative law. This is not so much constitutional law. It is a different thing. It's called administrative law. And basically, what it is, is the law surrounding all of the non-court decisions that get made in our society every day by tribunals and school boards and other committees and things like that. So for example, you know, if, for example, there's a lot of talk, there was a lot of talk last year about employment insurance benefits and whether or not people who didn't want to take the COVID vaccines, you may recall, were able to claim EI benefits or not, whether they ought to or not. Anyway, there's a tribunal that deals with employment insurance issues. And anyway, that tribunal will make decisions. And those decisions naturally affect Canadians' lives very significantly. And anyway, there is a mechanism then, as we say, called judicial review and administrative law, to supervise those decisions and to use the courts to sort of get in, to get involved in those decisions when necessary. Usually, the tribunals are given a lot of deference, a lot of respect. But now and then, the courts will decide that it's important to, you know, straighten something out. Maybe there's a couple of diverging lines of reasoning in a tribunal and the courts have to get involved to, you know, make sure everything is uniform again or other similar issues. And one of them, of course, excuse me, one of them, of course, is constitutionality. So that's where the Constitution gets involved with administrative law. If you can show that there is a very important issue that the tribunals, in this case, the school board, weren't referring to or didn't take into account properly, then that is a reason for the courts to get involved. And so here, again, like I was mentioning a few minutes ago, we're talking about the intersection between freedom of expression and, you know, school board policies. And so in my book, anyway, that is definitely an important issue that ought to be, you know, considered by the court.
Well, one of the things that's mentioned several times in your filing is the various iterations of their code of conduct. And I just wanted to zero in on that for a second because I did see it come up in not the Brjoski case, which is a teacher, former teacher in the Waterloo School District, who is having some trouble there, but in the trustee that was censored because he supported her, that was the Mike Ramsey case, that is also figures or focuses on their code of conduct. So maybe you could just tell us, are you talking about, when you talk about the school board policies, are you talking about the code of conduct that you're focusing in on? Or maybe explain how it figures into this case?
Right. So no, the code of conduct is what, you know, naturally governs trustees' obligations to the board and I guess to the community, of course. And of course, the code of conduct will say things like, you know, you must be respectful. You must, you know, act in a professional manner and all these other. So the code of conduct is what they are saying, the board is saying, that trustee Stone violated. So they're suggesting that because trustee Stone asked questions, because she brought a different perspective to the board with respect to these human rights policies that were being debated at the board level, because she did those things, she therefore violated the code of conduct, that it's somehow unprofessional of her or otherwise, you know, inappropriate for her to simply raise questions. And, you know, it's true, she did send out some tweets that were provocative. Maybe that's not quite the right word. They were certainly, I think they were insightful. I think what they were saying were what a lot of people are asking as well. So anyways, because of those tweets and because of her questions, she's been held to be unprofessional or somehow violating the code of conduct. So that is the school board's weapon, shall we say, against trustee Stone. Our shield, I guess if you want to use the analogy, is the Charter of Rights, which is to say, you know, these questions and these tweets are not offensive in a way that would be considered hate speech. Just a little bit about that, right, Kevin? I mean, we're hearing a lot from various quarters about hate, hateful comments, hateful behavior. I just want the viewers to understand that hate, hate speech, actual hate speech, is extraordinarily offensive speech. It is disgusting, disgusting comments that everybody would know immediately were hateful and have no place in our democracy. I mean, what you do, Kevin, with freedom of expression, as I'm sure you may know, is that, you know, the courts have said that freedom of expression is extraordinarily broad, as you would expect in a free society. And all that happens to that very broad, very complete sphere of expression is that you start to chip away at it only if the government can justify that chip. So for example, let's take a very disgusting example. Let's talk about child pornography, all right? That's a terrible, disgusting form of expression. It is a form of expression by definition. It's gross. It's disgusting. And no reasonable Canadian would ever want to countenance that. So we would all agree that because of the harm caused to children and to society and to even adults who like to get involved in all this stuff, that that is an acceptable reason to limit that expression. So we then have a crime and it's called, if you have child pornography, you'll go to jail and you can't talk about it. You can't use it. You can't make it. You can't have it. That is a limitation on our freedom of expression, but it's justified. Now, there's many other, you know, types of speech that could also be limited. One of them is, of course, very, very horrible hate speech against different races, different genders, different types of sexual orientation, whatever you want to say, different ethnicities. And so we have to make sure that we understand that in order to qualify as hate speech, there's got to be some very, very, very problematic speech going on. Raising a question about a policy and whether the term "white supremacy" should be involved in the policy or not is not hate speech. It is not. Asking a question about pronouns and whether or not it's appropriate for a teacher to have to memorize all of them in a classroom is not hate speech. It's a question. Some people might not like that question. They may think that that question's mean or mean-spirited or somehow bigoted. That doesn't make it hate speech, Kevin. And that is really what we're getting at here. That's really what we're getting at, is the content and the scope of what does it mean these days to have hate or to be hate speech or to engage in hate speech? It's not hate speech just because you don't happen to like what somebody says to you. That's not hate speech. If that's the definition of hate speech, then we are in serious trouble because then nobody can say anything that anybody ever disagrees with. And we're never going to get anywhere that way.
Okay, great. So you're gonna, this is going to be a free speech case primarily. That's what I understand. And do you? And do you know where it's going? Like you've made the filing now? Do you know what the next step is?
Well, what we've done, Kevin, is we've asked for the court to hear this matter on an urgent basis. And, and so we've, we've made the request now. We will be in court or on a conference call at some point with one of the judges to determine whether or not, in fact, this case should be treated as an urgent case or whether it should be left to, to go along the, the usual channels. There is a way for this thing to be heard on an urgent basis. And my, my argument will be that, you know, again, trustee Stone's duty is to her constituents. And she must have access to the meetings and to the documents in order to do her job. And so every day that she can't have access like that is, is very harmful, not only to her own ability to do her job, but also to the citizens of, of Oshawa and Durham Region who are asking her to do that job. And let's be clear, she clearly is bringing a different perspective to the board than all the other trustees. And so, so that perspective may in fact be extra important because nobody else apparently in the board level is wanting to bring that, that perspective. So she's, she's even more important that way. And thirdly, of course, it's affecting our entire system. It's affecting the entire democratic system that we've got, you know? So we've got to have it where our representatives, our elected people, unless they're removed from office, which is a whole other thing, have the right to show up and participate in the democratic process. And so we're asking the court to, to grant us an expedited hearing on that basis. I don't know what the court will say. Naturally, we will respect the court and we will do whatever the court directs us to do. I hope that we can get into an urgent hearing and I hope that we can get Linda some relief. I think it's important.
Great. Okay. Well, thanks very much, James, for being with us for this important episode, Justice Central Weekly, and I hope to speak to you again soon.
Thanks, Kevin. Cheers.